Of the Southfield City Council being held on Monday, August 29th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Here.
Cruz.
Present.
Frazier. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandabom. Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum, and we need to excuse Councilman Frazier and President Proton Mandabom.
Thank you. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our communications. In the City of Southfield, the City, the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you for your attention. First, we have Lironda M. Payden, or Patton. Ms. Patton, from Knob in the Woods, are you here? Okay.
Good evening, members of council. My question is, do we have a dog ordinance? And I'd like to know if we do. What does it mean to residents? And how is it enforced?
Thank you. We only take your questions. We don't always respond, or if we do, we respond at the end of communication.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I didn't hear.
She was, she was asking.
What ordinance were you asking about?
A dog.
Dog.
Dog ordinance.
The dog ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Nuisance.
The dog nuisance ordinance? Next, we have Chris Cleveland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Council President, and the rest of the council. I'm Chris Cleveland, a City of Southfield employee. Labor Day 2022 will occur on Monday, September 5th. Labor Day pays tribute to the contributions and achievements of American workers and is traditionally observed on the first Monday in September. It was created by the labor movement in the late 19th century and became a federal holiday in 1894. As then-President Barack Obama said in a Labor Day address, "It was the labor movement that helped secure so much of what we take for granted today." The 40-hour work week, minimum wage, family leave, health insurance, Social Security, Medicare, retirement plans, the cornerstones of the security of the middle class, all bear the union label. On Monday, when we celebrate Labor Day, I ask the council and everyone to remember we are celebrating and honoring workers. The workers who plan Southfield, build Southfield, maintain and protect Southfield, the workers who live and do business in the City of Southfield. I want to remind you that our TPOAM agreement expired on June 30th. The city finally agreed to meet with the bargaining committee on August 4th. They came to the table without an offer or any willingness to hear the TPOAM's priorities. They stated an offer would be ready by the end of the month. As of this afternoon, the union has not received any communication. City employees will continue to work hard to keep Southfield the thriving community that it is. We have been through some tough times, but we are tougher. We don't quit. To my fellow city workers, you are not forgotten. I see you. Have a happy and safe Labor Day, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Marcus Anderson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Name is Marcus Anderson. So I am an advocate for Department of Transportation, small business, and I want to see if I can get some assistance for someone to help me present a bill to the Department of Transportation in making a change in one of the formats for the small business. So this is one of the reasons why I'm here, to see if I could talk to someone that's maybe over Department Transportation Department. Because currently, right now, my committee, we meet with the construction sector like every quarter, and then we also meet with the federal side of construction when it comes to the work for the Department of Transportation with roads and bridge. So we're just looking to change one of the things in the small business to give small business the opportunity, more, better chance to win in projects. And then the second reason why I'm here is, just an introduction, I'm one of your, I am a painting contractor for the City of Southfield. I just wanted everybody to know that too as well. So that's the two reasons why I'm here.
Okay.
To see if I can get some assistance when it comes to the Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You wanted the City of Southfield Engineering Department?
I won a purchase order. I have a contract with the city department, Department of Southfield, for painting projects.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Just, I think it started last year. So I've been, currently been painting for different departments. I think I did the Deputy Mayor's Office this year, Treasury, Training. But again, I just wanted to make sure I come here because I don't know anybody, so I wanted to make sure, again, I come here and then all this, and maybe at the end of the meeting, I get a chance to meet somebody, meet everybody personally, or get the emails, maybe set up a meeting at some point.
Okay. You could leave your information with our clerk, you know, your contact information and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
If you leave it with our clerk, we can distribute it to our administration and have someone reach back out to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, you can give it to her now if you like.
Good afternoon. I have a question.
Thank you.
How does diversity inclusion work with this elected body? When you check every person, the residents vote for the board in the last election to build a council, now you're looking at appointing the next two or a couple of people for council. And it should be who the people have voted for, not who you have voted for. We get into a point to where it'll be four people that you pick and not the residents. And I thought the council was supposed to be who we had to represent us up there and not you. And especially since there are two of you sitting up there. So I'm kind of wondering, is there some type of bias there that you didn't pick the last person to come up there that we elected and asked to come up there, conscious or unconscious, that y'all may not know about as to why they didn't get on that seat? The power of diversity can only be unleashed and benefited clearly seen when we recognize those differences and learn to respect the value of individuals regardless of their background. So we got to take a look at everybody. We can't just eliminate who pick who we want to come up there, who we want to be in the club. It's who we pick. And all of y'all are diverse as to who we pick. And it's just stated. And if you're up there and you got put up there, you should welcome anybody else that comes up there that everybody else has voted for. Just need to work with it. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Mike Mickerbit. It's just, sorry if I butchered your name.
That's okay. It happens all the time. Hi, my name is Mike McKevicus, and I live at 30520 Woodgate Drive, and I've been a resident of the city for over 32 years. And something has come to my attention over the last few years since and during this lot town that we've had regarding the COVID matter. And, and by the way, I thank some of you for acknowledging that you've heard the memo from the CDC about their guidelines, and, and somebody needs to take those white robes off these street, these seats behind us so that that six-foot thing doesn't get in our way when the officers couldn't sit down in City of Michigan and he went to another one. That's just a side point. I'm going to talk fast. You heard I can. I got two minutes and 40 seconds yet. Here's my major and big concern. It's the 5G network that has been put in place about us. We don't know as individuals its total capability and the attempt of those who are controlling and monitoring whatever's going on throughout not just our city of Southfield, but throughout our community of, and the state of Michigan and the country. But here's what I've really noticed, and that is the surveillance cameras that are out and about town at all of our major intersections and other places. Some of those cameras are like many R2-D2s from the Star Wars days, and they rotate around looking and seeing what's going on and creating a database and file of whatever's going on. I don't know who paid for those because they're not just in our city. They're in our neighboring cities, east, west, north, and south, and all points in between. Who installed them? Who owns them? Who authorized them? Who paid for them and who is currently paying for them? It's my understanding from some of our very, very good loyal police officers that they're not owned by the city and they're not controlled by the city. It's my understanding from them, though, that they have access to them, and they're a good thing to have in place. Because if my daughter were abducted, we could find out where she got taken off to. All right? But it goes beyond that. What is the matter of the surveillance that could happen into the future? I've not been vaccinated, would not get vaccinated, but I do know that there is going to be a possibility, a tracking system that could check to see who is or who is not. And who knows what somebody in the future may choose to do with us, me and you, individual citizens of our nice, beautiful, welcoming, diversified community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So if someone can follow up, you got my email, and you got my phone number, and I got 41 seconds, but I probably packed in about four minutes and 30 seconds with what I just said. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes our communications for this evening, but I would like to ask if Terry, if you wouldn't mind telling us the dog noise ordinance? I know that we have police officers here in the, the.
Dog.
I think that would be a better question for our city attorney.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Madam President, we did take Ms. Hall out, and because our animal control officer just happened to be here, she gave her some information.
Okay. Thank you. The next one. Oh, you're good?
Good.
Okay. We have the small business person gave information to our city clerk. Will we refer that to you as well? City Administrator, we'll refer that to you as well to get to the right department. And then we have Mr. Keeler, who is asking about the appointments to vacancies on the council. We, our charter allows the council to choose how the vacancy will be filled, but we heard what you had to say. We do have a meeting set up for this Friday with the Legislative Committee, who will be taking that under advisement. So you're bringing this up now is perfect timing because we will be addressing that on Friday in the Legislative Committee.
Madam President, the, the meeting for the Legislative Committee is going to be actually next Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next Wednesday. Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. Counsel, next we have a presentation from the Southfield Police Officers Association of Michigan, acknowledgment of recent collective bargaining agreement.
Chief Mayor, Chief of Police, City of Southfield, I'm standing with Union President Dan Reston. Just on behalf of me as the leader of this organization, before Dan takes the microphone, I do want to thank, starting with the City Administrator, certainly Human Resources, all of you, a good mayor, for supporting this police department with this contract because immediately after this was done, our concerns about retention and recruiting are no longer. So thank you. Dan.
Thanks, Chief. Honorable members, I was contacted by city and departmental administration to provide an update on our hiring process and specifically how the contract that was recently authorized by council and the mayor has impacted that process. And we went from having approximately one to two people in our background process to 65 within a matter of a couple of weeks. It was also advised that HR had to temporarily close the process like we used to and move to a methodology where they acquire a ton of applicants, rank them, then open it back up on a monthly basis. So that has had a dramatic impact on that. Specifically, in discussing it with members in our union, the retention component is no longer, as the chief mentioned, a concern on a broad scale. Obviously, there's specifics to these types of situations, but on a broad scale, we no longer have that concern. So specifically regarding the contract, the wages and the maintenance of our excellent benefits package is what's keeping us far beyond our neighboring agencies. With that, I can take any questions if anybody has any.
Okay. Could you speak closer to the mic?
Yes, ma'am.
To your responses? Thank you. Counsel, do we have any? Councilman Hoskins?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, did you say 65?
65. Now, there's four, and again, I, I apologize, hope I'm not misrepresenting the HR process. There's four different categories that they're in. Initial applicants, there's initial background process. So it's 65 people broken up between all those different sequential steps in the hiring process.
And before that, and before that, you said it was one or two?
We were told, I believe it was about two months ago, there was none or one. So.
Are we seeing that they are coming from our neighboring communities? Are these, are these people who are currently on the force in other communities? Are these newer people?
Yes, sir. So, so a mix, fresh people in the academy and individuals that are currently employed at other agencies, lateral hires, which is a common thing. So I don't want to speak ill of any neighboring jurisdictions, but yeah, we have a, an attractive benefits package and contract at this point, so it's acquiring other currently sworn officers.
Okay, good. That is good to hear. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. Yeah, with respect to the, to the contract now for, for the salaries of, of all the city employees, we, we made a point that we want to definitely make sure that our salaries are competitive with all our peer groups in the, in, in, in the metropolitan area. And so that, that will, on a going-forward basis, based on what we did most recently, on a going-forward basis, we want to make sure that, that our salaries are, and, and benefits are representative. And I'm going, I'm going to use a number that, that perhaps I shouldn't, but I want to make sure that our salaries and benefits are within 80 percentile of our competitors, in, in essence, within the region. And, and the, when I first got on council, I'm, I came out of corporate America, I was used to having compensation studies done periodically so we would know what we are with respect to, to, to our competitors with, with respect to bringing new people in. Because in corporate America, you had to be competitive to bring in good people. If the, if the corporation want to survive and stay a part of the premier organization in America, you had to have good people. So we did stress that, well, I stressed that we, I wanted to see a compensation study, and I think we got that done. I think on a going-forward basis, the City of Southfield, we are definitely aware that we, well, had to be good to our employees, and employees are good to us, they're good to the citizen, and that's why people move to Southfield, because we have good employees, we have good services. So, and you guys earned it, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Cyver?
Thank you for your information this evening. This agreement, once again, represents the faith that our residents, as well as our business community, has in the Southfield Police Department. Several years ago, there was cries to defund the police. This is evidence, once again, that Southfield is not interested in defunding the police department. I'm glad that we could come to an agreement. We appreciate the work that the force does on behalf of our residents, visitors, and business community every day. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your presentation and your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we have no appointments, no minutes. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have consent agenda item A, which is the receipt of bids on printing the Southfield Living Newsletter. We have consent agenda item B, which is the receipt of bids on printing the 2022 Annual Report, the 2023 Calendar for the Community Relations Department. Item C, which is the authorization to purchase ammunition for the police department. Item D is the 2023 Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Southfield Agreement Renewal. And item E is Oakland County Interlocal Agreement to Provide the Animal Care Services for the City of Southfield. Counsel, are there any of these items that you want to hold for further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda items A through E.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of our consent agenda items A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our public hearings and site plans. Our first is PZR ODD 22-0003, which is the rezoning request for Southfield LLC to amend an existing Easy Mini Overlay Development District to allow for salons as permitted uses with development agreement of the Southfield Road LLC.
Madam Chair, before I go into the public hearings, did I miss the meeting minutes? Or did you decide to move that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our first public hearing is PZR ODD 22-003, rezoning request to amend the existing Easy Mini Overlay Development District to allow for salons as a permitted use within the development agreement. This item has come before council several times for study sessions, and the current ODD prohibits beauty salons in this particular space. Easy Storage has been operating for several years at this location. It has appropriate overlay development district zoning. Again, here is the frontage from Southfield Road with mixed-use development. All the storage units are accessed through one point of entry with interior access to all of the units, with storefronts and retail facing Southfield Road. There is one retail space just under 1,000 square feet that is currently vacant, which the salon suites is proposed to go in, which requires an amendment to the existing ODD. And just prior to the public hearing, I'd like to ask Mr. Bill Bowman, representative of the project, to come up and, and say a few comments, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that council has after the public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Bowman, I'm a partner with Easy Storage Southfield LLC, and do you need my address for the 8005 Main Street, Dexter, Michigan? We were here back in April and back again in early July, and Niani Barrett, who's our proposed tenant, was with me and gave details on exactly what she's proposing. We feel it's a perfect fit for the space, and I think we have more than adequate parking. And at the time, there was some concern about having too much of a salon, but we've got the Moneyball Sports in about 80% of the space, and we've just got this small, unique space that I think fits her perfectly. So we're excited to move forward and hopefully we can. Thank you. Happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if you don't mind, I'll have to open up the public hearing. I'll now declare the public hearing open for PZR ODD 22-0003, rezoning request. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Normally, I would not be in favor because I think sometimes cities miss the mark about oversaturating with certain types of businesses. We were oversaturated with the dollar stores, and then there was a moratorium. But I like the look of this structure. I think that Easy Storage put a lot of thought and care and design detail into this particular structure. And if I'm looking at the picture there, is the salon going in the center section?
Excuse me. The questions are asked through the chair. Through the chair, the public can ask the questions, and we'll be happy to respond after, after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, but it's not what you say is how you say it. It's the manner in which you do it. Okay? So I guess it's the building on, it's the property on the end. I would be in favor of this. As he said in his presentation briefly, there's adequate parking, the building looks phenomenal. I think we need some more businesses on 13 Mile, Southfield Road area. So I'm going to say, as a taxpayer, that I would be in favor of this request to amend the existing overlay district to allow for salons as permitted uses with development agreement of Southfield Road LLC.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Ray Molden.
I'm the owner of the Molden Agency located at 1616-5, uh, West 12 Mile Road. I'm also a Southfield resident, uh, for the last twelve years at 29819 Chelmsford Road. Uh, this property is located directly around the corner from my home. Uh, I do feel comfortable, I like the development that they had. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing more of these type of developments in the city of Southfield. Because Southfield is such a heavily minority, uh, city, I would like to see, uh, more ownership of, with minority presence of properties, because as we all know, ownership develops wealth. It develops wealth in community. When you live next to a homeowner as, as opposed to a renter, and I rented my first location for seven years before I purchased the building in Southfield, and there is definitely a difference. But I do agree with the design, the location, uh, the application, but in the future, I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have a piece of the pie, so we're supplying our community with the kind of things that we need. I know my wife has to drive down to Highland Park to get products for her hair, and she's not too happy about that all the time, and I'd like to buy everything in my own backyard. Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Chair, you want to give us? I'm sorry, Councilman Brightwell?
No, I, uh, do we need approval for this tonight? Uh, I will move that we-
People's gonna give us his recommendation. Were you gonna read us a recommendation?
Yes, yes, ma'am chair. Um, again, a question was raised about the location and looking at the, um, the facade elevation, um, the proposed tenant would be on, on the left looking at the screen or the end cap. And again, this is, um, a minority-owned woman business that'll be moving in. Um, this amendment will be specific to this site only, and we are recommending favorable approval of the amendment to allow for the salon suites at this particular location. If council does, uh, move forward with the approval, then we ask you introduce ordinance number 1757. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, uh, I move that we approve PZR ODD 22-0003, rezoning request of Southfield Road LLC.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the PCR zero, PZR ODD 22-0003 rezoning request of Southfield Road LLC as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1757.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to have the introduction of ordinance number 1757. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Our next item is PSP 22-0006. This is a site plan review.
Yes, thank you. Our, um, final public hearing, actually, this is not a public hearing, this is a site plan. Um, as you stated, PSP 22-0006, Site Plan Review Request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC, to convert the existing five-story hotel to an assisted living memory care facility on property located at 26620 Franklin Road. Uh, the specific, um, site is the rear portion or western portion of the current development. It's a five-story hotel. Previously, this has received, um, rezoning approval to allow for the memory care facility. It is located in an office service, um, zoning district, and the master plan supports technology corridor. This is the, uh, site plan, which shows improvements, so landscaping around the current facility. These are the elevations of the proposed improvements to the existing facility, uh, floor plans. And with that, I'd like to, um, ask the applicant representative to come up and, and talk about the project, as well as the operations of the proposed memory care facility. Be happy to answer any questions council has afterwards. Thank you.
Honorable Chairman, members of the City Council Commission, thank you for hearing us for our 85-bit assisted living memory care facility. My name is David Dowling, owner of Yukon Building and Land Development, uh, located at 4051 Hagerty Road, West Bloomfield, Michigan. We are seeking, we are seeking site plan approvals for the senior assisted living and memory care facility. Uh, the new memory care facility will be entering off of Franklin Road, uh, totally independent of the existing hotel. The property will be owned by the same owner and operated by a local operator. I've been in front of this board on many occasions reviewing the zoning approvals, site plan approvals. On each occasion, Jeff and Terry, uh, on the planning department, has done a great job in helping me, helping us be familiar with the location and proposed changes to the site and to the building through their PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Terry, for your help on this project. Since we are familiar with the site and this use at this time, I would like to respond to any questions you may have toward this use, or any questions you may have with the operator.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any, uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yeah, as you indicated, we've seen this numerous times, and I know a lot of questions have been asked. Um, and I'm, I'm in favor of this, but given that this is a assisted living and, uh, memory care facility, are you, are you being, uh, regulated or governed by any state, uh, agency?
You can answer to that, Marty.
Yes, absolutely. Licensed by the state of Michigan.
Okay, and what, under what umbrella are you, you're licensed, what?
Being licensed as a home for the aged.
Okay.
Under specific guidelines.
Okay. All right. So how often are you, uh, how often will you be, let's say, approved, you know, inspected? Assuming that you, they, they are saying that you are in accordance with the guidelines.
Be monitored regularly and approved on an annual basis.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Is there a sign being proposed, um, off of the entrance on Franklin Road?
Yes, there will be. We haven't went through any of the design criteria or met with anybody in signing or planning at this point until we get the approvals. There will be.
I guess to the city planner, we can put a sign in that area?
Uh, well, through the chair, the, the building department regulates impermit signage. They do allow, um, they do allow ground signs per frontage, and they, there is a formula for wall signage based on the size of the building and their frontage. So this, uh, this parcel has a frontage to the rear. Uh, I would imagine that they would be allowed one ground sign with, um, some wall signage based on our, our building department's formula. But that's typically requested after site plan approval.
Thank you, and then can you go back to, I believe, one of the first pictures where the, it shows this building and the hotel? Um, between the hotel, the high-rise on the right, and then this particular building, there's a long corridor between the two buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that part of the hotel or part of your location? Number one, and then number two, can people from the hotel come into your building and vice versa, or is it totally closed?
Okay, to answer both your questions, the first, the two-story is a, is a 54-unit executive suite hotel that's added to the Best Western Premier. There's no association to the two-story and this five-story building. They are completely separate, operationally and business-wise.
I don't think we're talking the same thing. When you look at the, um, the high-rise?
Right.
There's that little, I don't know if there's a better picture, not the bottom picture, the top picture. There's a piece that's, um-
Oh, that little brown building that's there?
Well, it, it looks like it's connected to the hotel, but also connected to yours. I walked the property the other day, and I couldn't see in. Does that?
That's, that's actually a security wall. The, uh, a generator, uh, parts of, uh, the switchgear for DTE are back there. It's just, it's just a, uh, a security wall.
Through the chair, to David, there's the, the large former Holiday Inn tall structure.
Right.
Then you have banquet facilities and all the supportive, um, accessory uses for that facility.
Correct.
That ties in with that former hotel, but our understanding is there'll be no access from the hotel to the memory care and vice versa. So I think Ms. Banks is indicating that, that connective piece is she's, what she's referring to.
Okay. Um, well, it, there, there won't be any connection as far as people being able to transfer from one building to the next, if that's your question?
Yeah, that was my question. I didn't know if there was like a door that was going to be closed off, because it is two separate buildings, and I thought that piece was connected to the hotel, but I could not tell what was in that piece.
Yeah, it used to be an old corridor. At one time, this was to support, um, a 95-unit hotel that was attached to the old Holiday Inn. So, building the tower first, the two-story second. This five-story is a separate, completely separate operated facility as a memory care. It's like corridors closed off, the access exits, everything is separate, power, water, everything is completely separate, metered separately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I just have one additional question. It just came up, uh, which you will, you will be sharing the kitchen. Will the kitchen be a, one kitchen will be serving both facilities?
No. Uh, there's, there's a current restaurant in the hall, in the, I'm sorry, Best Western Premier presently, and that'll be servicing the tower and the banquet facilities, all of the components of the hotel. This particular facility, you'll see the, the light grade section on the bottom over here, uh, closest to Franklin, that's a new kitchen facility and dining area to be built onto the five-story.
Okay.
It'll be a completely separate kitchen and dining facility strictly for that building.
Okay, my, my memory is serving bad, 'cause I thought I had heard previously that the, a kitchen will be serving both facilities, but now you're saying this facility, we have its own designated kitchen.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
This, this facility will not be dependent on any other facility on the property. It'll be completely self-contained.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions?
And again, uh, David, would you mind, um, explaining the outdoor areas? All fenced in and only has limited access from the building?
Oh, sure. Uh, there's a garden area on the exterior of the building, that's all fenced in for the, the residents when they're coming out or pa, patrons don't want to visit the residents. Uh, the security fence is there for two reasons, for people not entering into the facility, and also for people, uh, not being able to leave the facility.
With that, if there's no further questions, we do have a recommended resolution, um, basically, um, recommending approval of the proposed site plan of Kiwi Hospitality to convert the existing five-story hotel to an assisted living memory care facility on property located at 26620, and I have a list of, um, conditions for your consideration.
Counsel? Councilman Brightwell?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of PSP 22-0006, Site Plan Review Request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Hoskins, for the approval of PSP 22-0006, Site Plan Review Request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, just a reminder, when we're making motions, to make sure we move the motion for the, um, so when you're making the motion, it'll be a move that PSP 22-006 site plan for the approval, to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel, I'd like to take a pause at, right now, and ask if we would listen to our resident, Pam Gerald. She was detained, uh, a little bit, be, when we had communications with undue circum, things that was beyond her control.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, a couple, about a year ago or so, there was an issue that came up about ice machines at some of the gas stations in the city of Southfield. And because the issue appeared to be, in my mind, hodgepodge at the time, I thought the city made a very good decision to put a moratorium on any enforcement. So, fast forward to now, there is, there are letters going out to these gas station owners about compliance with the ice machine. We have a lot of gas stations here that do the right things. They invest in landscaping, and we still have a gas station to make hole for his landscaping on Eighth and Evergreen. We have gas stations that light up their facility. We have gas stations that really keep it clean, but we do have a few gas stations that, from everything, top to bottom, they fail. So, myself and all the gas station owners that I know, that I've known for almost my forty-year history with Southfield, they're confused on the ordinance. They're confused on the wording of the ordinance. So does the ordinance say that if they purchase this gas station, or they've had it for a while, that having the ice machine, as long as it's neatly and cleanly displayed out there, they're grandfathered in, and that only new gas stations being built, or remodeled gas stations, have to comply with having it on the inside? And I think that if you're not going to be consistent for the gas stations that are doing the right thing, because we know we have power outages, and when we have power outages, that ice is essential to people that have lost their, their power and their food and their refrigerator and freezer. So, if you're saying that everyone has to do it, I think it's only fair for this city to show appreciation for those gas station owners and explain the process. And just like you have created an industrial district for an entire area, maybe you can do something from an entire standpoint for the gas station owners. I think it's asking a lot to have a gas station, put an ice machine in, inside the store when you know that it's not big enough. And I'm talking specifically now about the one on Eighth Mile and Chiawasi. I was able to get the plans from the owner of the gas station, so I'm hoping that I can get Terry Crowe and members of this council to take a look at it. But don't run our gas station owners out for something that, it just doesn't seem like you guys have it, totally vetted and put in place the right way. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Terry, would you like to respond? It is something that we are looking at.
Well, um, per, per your, our discussion last week, uh, my office is investigating, um, what took place in 2018. I'm compiling that report. Uh, I'd like, uh, a few more days to complete my, my research, but I have, um, pulled up the meeting minutes from the council, our previous presentation, and had some discussions with our team members on the action that was taking place by council regarding ice machines. And, uh, I'd like to have the opportunity to come back and, and present a full report to council at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I should ask our city administrator, we have deferred any action on any of the law- on any of the letters that's been presented until we get, we have a result or findings from our planning department?
Madam Chair, there's also the issue of propane tanks that must be stored outside. They cannot be stored indoors. Uh, we see this certainly at Lowe's and Home Depot and think Ace Hardware. Um, and so gas stations are also offering propane tanks. And, um, apparently that's not on the site plan. So, if I could direct that, um, added inquiry to Planner Crowe.
And, and again, through the chair, um, we can discuss the propane tanks as well as the clothing donation bins, because we, we dealt with all those, but currently propane sales are only allowed in industrial districts. But we'll come back with a full report on all these items.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all. Okay. Uh, next, we're at our agenda items for discussion and/or action. Our first item is the authorization to enter into a new ten-year contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the body worn cameras, in fleet car cameras, tasers, and interview room.
Chief Ben, Chief of Police, City of Southfield. As the, my members approach, anytime there's a significant purchase request, it's important for the leadership of the police department to not only have the project managers present to answer any questions that you all may have, but also we bring in, if they're available, the vendors. And so I do want to start off by introducing our Axon reps who've taken time to be here. Um, Gil Graham and Julie Bostack, both Axon reps. And before I move forward, uh, they've both done an outstanding job of being responsive to this police department during these processes. Also with me, I'm gonna start off with the deputy chief, Deputy Chief Aaron Hughley. We have two lieutenants, Lieutenant Matt Taylor, and also our good Lieutenant, uh, Manito, Blake Manito. As you already met, our union president, Dan Arista, and from IT, who answered the IT question related to this project, our good director, Renee. And so, yes, the Southfield Police Department, we are seeking authorization to purchase or enter into a new ten-year contract with Axon Enterprises. As you all know, this company is based out of Scottsdale, Arizona. The authorization would include the continuation of a hundred and thirty-one body worn cameras and new fleet three for fifty-two police vehicles. I'm gonna pause right there, 'cause the word continuation, so meaning, as you already know, we already have a existing contract with our body worn cameras and our fleet cameras. But again, this was an continuation, this is a feature that we're gonna add. So, uh, three, fleet three, fifty-two vehicles, and the new install of an investigations interview room with hardware and a hundred and thirty-one new tasers. The current contract for body cam and in-car fleet two, annual average is over three hundred and four thousand. The current contract for taser, which is set to expire October thirty-first of this year, the annual average is fifty thousand, uh, six hundred. The annual average total for both current contracts is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred. The annual average of the proposed new ten-year contract is four hundred and ten thousand. And the annual, uh, difference between the current contract and the new contract is fifty-four thousand. A question that council always asks when it comes to replacement of equipment is, do we get any type of reimbursement or trade-in? And so for the tasers, Axon is giving us a hundred and eighty dollars per taser, which equates to twenty-three thousand, five hundred and nine, and eighty dollars for our taser reimbursement and trade-in. When it comes to the fleet body cams, again, we go from fleet two to fleet three. We give a trade-in amount of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three. So, answer that is yes, for both those equipments, we are turning those in for the new equipment, and Axon is reimbursing us by way of a, uh, allotment for the trade-in value. The total savings, if this bundle approach is approved, is nearly one point four million dollars to do this over this ten-year span. So, let's break it down to what we're looking at, to the body worn cameras. Again, it's a new contract, remain the cadence of new body worn cameras every two point five years and include new software for the body worn cameras that will increase efficiency department-wide. As you all know, when it comes to technology, it's always evolving, always maturing, and this process allows us to be on top of that advancement in technology. Fleet three upgrade, the department vehicles currently, we have with fleet two, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna go to fleet three for all fifty-two vehicles, uh, both now and at that six-year mark. Fleet, uh, features and upgrades, some of the features that we are excited about, there'll be a dual-view camera that captures clear panoramic evidence, integrated four K license plate reader recognition covering three laser traffic. So, a reminder that council approved, uh, last year for the police department to strategically place license plate readers around the city, which is, as you all know, in some of our media reports, been very dynamic and helping us get a handle on the individuals who, uh, commit these car thefts. So, now with this new additional equipment and advancement of technology, LPRs is now integrated into our body worn camera product, so now the efficiency and timely notification now increases, uh, for officers out in the field. The fleet dashboard app for live-streaming, video recall, wireless activation, just to name a few of the features with this new fleet three. The new tasers and contract renewal, this new contract includes a renewal of taser contract. That contract is also set to expire October thirty-first of this year. And again, this includes taser sevens, again, we upgrading, for a hundred and thirty-one sworn officers now and then again at that six-year mark. The Axon interview room, which we're very excited about, right now, we currently have an antiquated interview room process. As you all know, when it comes to interviewing suspects, we need to have the advanced technology to capture, uh, the individuals when they make these statements, these confessions, 'cause without the video evidence captured properly and stored properly, you all see how defense attorneys may, uh, present a, a argument that it never happened, or this person never said that. And so it's important for us to continue to move this department forward. Axon features will allow us to have a full video record of witness and suspect interviews, which help protect officers and the city against false claims of coercion or, or perjury. Much like when we have our body worn cameras and our fleet cameras, I can't tell you countless times, I get emails, citizen complaints, based on, uh, use of force allegations, race allegations, and with the equipment that we have, we resolve these things, uh, right at, at infancy stages. And so, just, uh, some more features with the interview room, we can even have live-stream interviews. So, you say, well, what does that mean? There may be critical cases where we'll live-stream the interview with members of the prosecutor's office, so they can see things transpiring as well, and those are high-level cases, uh, that we would use that for. So, the fiscal impact, the total cost for the continuation of a hundred and thirty-one bu- body worn cameras, fleet three upgrade for fifty-two vehicles, a new interview room, new tasers, all this will come to four million, one hundred dollars, uh, and that cost is spread out over a ten-year span. And so, the funding has already been identified, certainly with our current Axon process, we already have these accounts, uh, identified and approved through Austin, again, of financial director. And though sometimes council likes to have, um, on record exactly where the accounts are coming from, so I do have that information as well. So, for the, uh, fleet body worn cameras, that is coming out of the operating supplies, uh, interview room account, for the equipment purchases that's coming out of the equipment purchase account for the tasers, the operating supplies and the docking stations are under the operating supplies account. And we do have all of these listed under patrol and investigations, again, already pre-identified according to our budgeted conversations as we entered into twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, with that, I'll open up the floor for any questions.
Uh, thank you, great presentation. Uh, I just wanted to also note that the reason for not saying this out for bid is because it's going through another government unit.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is a good point that you bring to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Counsel, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just, so for the, um, the body cameras, the updating every two and a half years, that is software? Is that also the, the physical equipment as well, or?
Yeah, and let me do this, let me, uh, sort of waste these folks' good time. Come up here, if you want me to answer some of these questions.
I can either stand on my tiptoes or move the mic down. Um, to answer your question, Councilman, yes, so it'll be updating the hardware every two and a half years, and it'll ship out to, um, right directly to the police department.
Oh, all right. Um, and the stor- the, um, the footage and the, the video and the audio, I know here in the, uh, for the interviews, it says it goes to evidence.com. For the dash and the body cameras, does it go to the same place, or does it go some, somewhere else?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And, and here it says it's, it can be stored up for weeks, is there an exact number for how long it's stored?
So, technologically speaking, the police department has unlimited storage, so they can keep it for as long as state law and police department policy dictates.
Um, the, there's this one feature here, the automated audit trail, but can you tell me more about that?
So, the audit trail is able to, it's a chain of custody situation, so that you can see each person who's part of the police department go in and, and who's watched that video and why they watched that video. I think that's what, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Um, that's all the, that's all the questions I have now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, Chief, um, thank you for that very thorough presentation, sir. Um, it really was helpful for us to make a decision, not due to belief, so. I just have one quick question. When you budget for things like this, are you budgeting for the number of officers that we could have or the number of officers that we do have?
So, the numbers that we budgeted for. And right now, we are budgeted at one thirty-one, so this reflects those numbers.
Okay, 'cause I was, all I was doing, I was thinking about these sixty-five potential officers. And I said, are we gonna have to come back and try to get them some, some stuff? But, okay, that's what I was just curious about, I didn't know that, and.
Yes, sir.
You know, other than that, uh, uh, it was kinda intimidating seeing all y'all come up here. I got a little worried for a minute. But, uh, thank you for all your work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, Chief, um, obviously, um, I'm supportive of this, uh, the body worn cameras. Matter of fact, um, the finance committee initiated body cameras several years ago, that's one of the initial ones came in, came on board. Um, and we've been supportive of it ever since. Just a technical thing, in reading through this, the new contract will maintain the cadence of new body, what, what is, what does that mean? The cadence of new body worn cameras?
So, the, the transition, the continuous upgrades in a timely manner.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, so the, the sequence of events, so as we articulated how, uh, at the six-year mark, we'll get replacement equipment, two-point-five, uh, year mark, we get additional equipment, so just keeping the sequence and consistency with the program over that ten-year mark.
Okay. The other question, these are just, um, I'm a hundred percent for this, but I'm just, it, pertinent curiosity. The next item, uh, with the new tasers, what is the, wh- what is new about them? What, you know, taser is a taser, or, I'm just, that's the lamest in terminology. So, what's new about them?
Right, and, and let me bring you the, uh, the training coordinator, he'll answer that.
So, Graham will be able to go into the very nuanced elements as well, but they're smaller, which is nice. So, the current taser right now has two shots, it's much larger, the holster that accommodates that taser is also, uh, a inefficient holster. Yeah, apology. Um, the way it draws, so they're a safer draw, they're smaller, easier to use. They have more kinetic energy, meaning that the probes are going to connect better and more efficiently. Um, the probes have been redesigned, the angle of departure, 'cause when you shoot the taser, the top probe comes out straight, the bottom one comes down at a slight angle. The angles, and Axon did all their research, uh, based on the distances that most common companies, some are being subjected to the taser, they adjusted those angles, 'cause the angle is very crucial on the effectiveness of the taser. So, if it's too small, taser will only cause a little bit of, uh, uh, pain compliance, it's not gonna incapacitate the person. Too large of a spread, then you have to worry about missing the individual. Uh, so they've modified those angles to be more appropriate for, um, based on the, uh, the, the data, the common distance that people are tased at. Uh, the lasers are more improved, they have, and again, staying on the, uh, spread issue as well, there's two different spread cartridges in the taser, which can be, um, modified by simply rotating the taser, which is a gross motor movement, something easy to do when you're under stress. So, an officer can switch from a, uh, distance target to a close target much more easily, much more effectively. Um, and Graham, if I'm missing anything, uh, to, to jump in there as well.
Since Julie got to get on the mic, I wanna go too. Um, council members, thank you very much for having us. So, I would say also, when you think about the holistic contract with Axon, this updated taser is tapping into the, um, technic- technological advances of the whole ecosystem, right? 'Cause we're talking about body cameras, in-car cameras, and now tasers as well. And all those things are connected together, so one of the great things that the taser seven does is when it's actually armed by an individual officer, it sends out a beacon that activates his or her body camera and the cameras of the surrounding officers as well, to get the full transparency, um, of the moment. So, tapping into that broader ecosystem, capturing, uh, the truth, and then protecting life with a less lethal device as well.
Thank you.
Look, I'm gonna ask another question, this, this is kinda generic, and it's probably deals with some current events. Uh, and it deals with the taser. So, what is the probability, like the, the officer, I think it could have been Milwaukee, and I know you carry a taser on the left side, so what's the probability of our local forces pulling out the wrong thing and, and shooting somebody?
So, and our policy forbids the officer from carrying the taser on the same side as his primary weapon, so it has to be on the opposite. This new taser also has a different, uh, way that it's drawn from the holster, so it's a completely separate motion, and then also, can't speak directly to that agency's training protocols, but we have specific protocols, uh, at numerous times throughout the year, at different incremental stages, built into different training, scenario trainings, taser-specific trainings, firearms trainings, uh, live-fire scenario stuff, where we implement directly into training, specifically drawing the taser, transitioning back to the firearm, or vice versa, to build proper muscle memory. So, it's a very different motion for the officer, because they aren't allowed to grab it from over here.
Right.
His leg can't be alone, and again, uh, continuous, not just one-time-a-year trainings where they're properly drawing that. Did that answer?
Yeah, you answered it, and so I assume it, it depends on dexterity of the officer. If he's a left-handed or right-handed, that's where he's, is the dominant hand is, don't, whatever, you, you, your weapon is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a lot of those, well, you talked specifically about that incident, it is a lack of training scenarios that we do, uh, and we beat the drum on these issues, so those things don't happen in this agency. And so, uh, our training program is, uh, very dedicated to ensuring that officers practice these things in repetitive motion, because we always revert back to your training under stress, and that's what we pride ourselves on.
Okay, okay, that's it for me, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Um, excellent presentation, Chief. Could you, um, to repeat, why are we not going out for competitive bid on this?
So, yeah, I think, pardon, purchasing deal, I'd use the appropriate language, but I believe there's an existing, um, um, I don't even know what it's called, it's kinda outside my area expertise.
It's called a.
Cooperative.
Cooperative bidding or something.
And that's, the, the prices, unless you guys know, this, this is outside of my area of, yeah.
Hi, Councilwoman.
Hi.
So, the police department is utilizing a purchasing cooperative, um, specifically at SPD, they're using Sourcewell to do the purchasing, and that is a pre-bid RFP that Sourcewell has already put out, and we won that bid, so that they're able to purchase that way and ensure all of the pricing and everything is consistent with what Sourcewell has pu- pushed out.
Is that through the county or through the state?
It's a nationwide.
Nationwide?
Yes.
Federal?
Yeah, it's, it's used across the country. It, they're based in Minnesota, I don't know how important that piece is, but it's used ac- across the country.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much. You have another question? Do you have another question?
No, I was going to move that we approve this.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the police department to enter into a new 10-year contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for body worn cameras, in-car fleet cameras, tasers, and interview room.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, for the approval to, of authorization to enter into the new 10-year contract with Axon Enterprises as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here as well.
Next, we have the approval of a professional services contract for workplace advisory survey subscription with Gallup, Inc.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. As you all are aware, the city is in the process of establishing the organization's diversity, equity, and inclusion program. A part of the process includes performing surveys to explore employee concerns, which is an integral, integral starting point in the assessment to determine the overall organizational needs. Gallup, Inc. was chosen because the company offers competitive rates with products and services that provide analysis tools, templates, and wraparound services that are best suited to build, for building the DEI program for the organization. The contract will extend over a three-year period at an annual cost of $17,800, beginning in the current fiscal year. Funds are available in this year's budget. The total cost of the program will be $53,400. And now I'd like to turn it over to Kimberly Gochet. She is the organization's diversity, equity, and inclusion training manager, who will provide you with a little more detailed information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to add that the utilization of the Gallup services will allow focus on the importance of leadership's role in creating the engaging workforce that we're working to develop with resources and professional services in lieu of a dedicated staff in my own office. The results will allow and will allow for identification and prioritization of actionable items, relevant goals that will need to meet our business objectives, all of which will result in a reduction in turnover, the ability to attract and retain talent, to develop that talent, and again, meet the needs of the organization overall. And the bottom line here will lead to a differentiation, differentiated experience for the members of our community. And so with that being said, we're here to respectfully request that council approve the professional services contract with Gallup, Inc.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
So how often would they, would they survey? And who will be surveyed?
So we're going to utilize the survey for our full-time employees. We have the option to survey as much as we would like during the, each year that we utilize the services. We can craft surveys. If someone else wanted to craft a survey and utilize the services, I have, I would have five seats available for an admin to participate with me in surveying our staff.
Okay. And I'm a big fan of surveys. And you get a pulse of what your environment or your audience. So without, without giving away any proprietary thing or anything that might be confidential at this particular moment, what is the most pressing thing you want to know of our employees?
The very important thing is to know what they need from us to be productive. Right now, if you look at the past, employees were more concerned about pay, their pay. Now employees are more concerned about their life, work-life balance. You know, it's kind of hard to find people, talented people to fill the roles that we are looking for right now because they have so many different options. So when we complete a survey, we want to know what they're thinking, what their needs are, how their relationship is with their manager or even their team members. So what we can do better to serve our employees, to develop our employees so that they can give us their best and we can, you know, in turn, service our community.
Okay, no, that's, that's.
Yes.
What?
I'd just like to add, Councilman Brightwell, the whole goal of performing the surveys and to get to the end goal is to create a sense of belonging for organizational members.
Okay. Okay. And like I indicated, I'm a big fan of surveys. And everywhere I've been, I always tried to tap into what the employees are thinking. So will this data be shared with, obviously, Mr. Zorn, but will council have an opportunity to look at some of this with respect to an overview? Not necessarily getting into the weeds, but just an atmosphere, a tone of, in answering what you're gleaming from these surveys?
So the results will be confidential. We would work with our managers because we can break them down by departments. The managers wouldn't actually get the results, but they would get information regarding their department. So there would be general information that I would be able to share with this council.
Okay, no, that's all we need.
Yes.
I mean, all general stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I don't need the specifics. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Did you say they also provide an individual to help or assist you? You mentioned a few times about an admin.
Oh, no. So I'll have some admin licenses so I could share with people in my department, in the HR department. But Gallup does provide a Gallup project manager, and I would serve as the City of Southfield's project manager. And then I'd have additional resources should I have questions. They would come and report the findings to the leadership team. So I do have access to professional services within this agreement.
Okay, that's what I meant, professional services. Within the $17,800?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes. First of all, I just wanted to say I'm very glad to hear that this is being done. I've been a part of this process like this numerous times. And, you know, you do glean a whole lot of information, you know, when you take the time to actually talk to people. Because like you said, people just always openly come and tell you things, you know. But they feel more comfortable maybe being a part of a process where everybody's, you know, doing the same thing. So I only had two quick questions. One, I'm assuming this is always going to be online. They're not doing written type stuff?
So it will be online. So if someone needed a computer access, I would reserve space in our training room. But they have the option to complete the survey on their mobile device. There'll be QR codes. So different avenues to complete the survey.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And just the other question was, is there going to be any qualitative data taken?
Yes. So there's multiple methods of displaying the data.
All right, awesome.
And it's also benchmarking data. So it'll be across the nation that we would see benchmarks for local governments.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you, what, how are you encouraging participation on answering surveys? Because I know a lot of employees do not believe that it's confidential.
Yes.
I like the ability that they can use it on their phone, but a lot of times that can even be identified. Some employees feel that way. So how do you feel, or what do you have in place to encourage participation with your surveys?
So I talk, we're working on a presentation to the staff just to introduce what our plans are in terms of diversity. With Gallup, I would convey all of the employee information necessary for them to create a unique identifier, and I won't even have access to that identifier. So there will be no names associated with it unless an employee was willing to put that in the comments, the added comments that they're allowed to give. And so we would promote that through the literature, through the internet, through our public presentation to the staff, an employee newsletter. And if they have questions, they can always come to me. So I will.
Okay, because I know that's how, and I don't know, are you looking for a certain percentage to participate? But I know that the way to get participation is to ensure that, you know, it's total. I don't know, nobody will ever know what your answers are. And then when you take your totals and tally all these things up, that you respond back and let also the employees know, we heard you. Here's what came through and, you know, not with names or anything, but here's some of the things that came up, and here's how they're being addressed.
Absolutely.
That will also encourage participation. Because like you said, at the end of the day, you want the employee to feel important, wanted, understood, and know that they have a place of belonging here at the City of Southfield. And that is one way of doing it. So I am totally in support of doing this.
And so, you know, our DEI Advisory Committee has formed. We just met for the first time. They went, they completed the training. So we will be using different methods of communication to their colleagues. So we have that added group.
Very good information. Thank you. Any other questions? Mayor, did you have a comment? Did you, no?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the request for a professional service contract for workplace advisory survey subscription with Gallup Incorporated.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, for the approval of the professional services contract for workplace advisory survey subscription with Gallup, Inc. as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next item is the presentation and discussion on the preliminary draft 2023 through 2028 Sustainable Southfield Master Plan Update.
Good evening. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Looking back, our last plan was adopted in June of 2016. And I believe counsel authorized us to begin the update just prior to when COVID-19 hit. And it's been incredible couple of years since that time. But recently, the draft plan was reviewed, vetted, and made a recommendation by our Planning Commission to submit it to counsel for authorization for our required 63-day public review. Tonight, I'm going to give you a high-level overview of the plan. Mr. Spence will be back on September 6th, under consent, if you should so authorize us to release the plan for the required 63 days. Then the plan will come back to the Planning Commission in November, and then finally to counsel in December with the plans and hopes that we get the plan adopted by the end of 2022. I've been a professional planner for over 35 years, and I've never seen so much change as has happened in the last five years, specifically since COVID-19 hit. We started to see a number of changes in retail, housing, work, health, technology prior to the pandemic. The pandemic accelerated many of these changes that were happening in our industry. We also are dealing with a number of social inequities brought to the forefront, extreme weather events, the Great Resignation, and inflation. This picture just captures two of the issues that communities are dealing with, high gas prices and hiring of good employees. We relied a lot on the 2022 trend report compiled by the American Planning Association. These trends identified areas that we need to act now to prepare for and to learn and watch. And five trend categories include societal, technological, environmental, economic, and political trends. The pandemic has accelerated many existing and emerging technological and economic trends, including the automation of work, e-commerce, societal and political trends, social inequities, and political polarization. Some of the social inequities that we're reviewing and dealing with across the country include new concepts of programs for equitable community funding, creation of new markets for inclusive design, amplifying the need for ethical artificial intelligence, elevating the issues of climate justice, and creating new requirements for inclusive data collection and data use. With regards to climate change, we are looking at mitigation and adaption planning, including adopting a climate action plan. In 2021 alone, Southfield and the southeast Michigan suffered five category-two storms. And this picture is flooding in Southfield. So we could get into a big discussion about climate change, but it's always about the local level. How am I being impacted? And many of our residents are being impacted by the severe flooding issues and storms. With regard to technological innovations, we're going to see more mobility as a service with these robotic delivery systems, shared micro-mobility options, and as Mr. Brightwell has brought up, urban air mobility. With the evolution of planning, it's important that we stay informed. We prepare as much as we can for the future. We need to continue to be fluid to adapt to emerging trends and to prioritize high priority trends, including climate emergency, housing, new transportation modes and services, built environment-related impacts on our public health, among others. Now, we do have some opportunities being situated in the Great Lakes. Buffalo has adopted the montage of, we are a climate refuge. We have water, we have less severe weather events than most of the other country. And this is an asset. That's why we see a lot of data centers relocating to Southfield because we minimize the amount of earthquakes, tornadoes, flooding, and so forth in our region. Climate innovation, decarbonization, and electrification are continuing to rise. Have you heard in the news recently, California is requiring a progressive approach to selling all electric vehicles by the year 2040. We have to be concerned with our grid-connected sustainable energy, provide more opportunities for wind, solar, and thermal. And then individuals are becoming more informed about their lifestyles and ethical consumption, many of which have been targeted at wealthier consumers to date. Decarbonization and diversification of transportation includes many of the things that we've been currently working on here by providing bike-share opportunities, developing more non-motorized pathways, and rethinking our public rights of way. Counsel was progressive to allow for outdoor seating during the pandemic. Those are trends that are catching on with regard to curb management and technology. We're also dealing with the digitalization of everything. Digital inclusion is going to become more important. Hybrid community engagement, which we use Zoom and other technology during the pandemic when we had to reach out to the public. But there's also digital vulnerability. Ransomware and cyber attacks are on the rise. With regards to economic restructuring, we have seen how e-commerce has impacted severely our brick-and-mortar retail stores. Everything as a service is being provided through social media. And gig work and policy workers can advertise and reach out to multiple clients over multiple different venues. How many times have you gone on the computer and seen targeted marketing based on your purchase practices? Or gone on Instagram and seen very tailored marketing based on something you might have recently purchased? Health equity in nature, we, for the first time in this country in our 200-plus-year history, we have a declining life expectancy, which has been impacted by COVID. But in 2014, the average American could expect to live to 78.9 years. In 2020, it was 77.3 and has gone down even further. We also are dealing with things called the pandemic cave syndrome, where people have anxiety of socialization after being at home for so long. So coming to a public meeting, we need to be sensitive that people feel uncomfortable being around crowds. With regards to housing affordability, availability, and accessibility, we're looking at zoning reform. As council knows, we have proposed the mixed-use corridor district to allow for more middle housing, which creates higher density and more walkable neighborhoods. Political shifts and polarization, we've seen how our nation has become so divided over just about every topic, which affects. over just about every topic, which affects the way we do things here locally. With regard to population diversity and inclusive design, we know as a country, our baby boomers are aging, and our curve is, is going to be tipped where our aging older adults are greater than those younger adults, children, and those who are being born. And specifically, Southfield has a greater percentage of older adults than the state of Michigan, the county of Oakland, and, and in the nation. So we need to be prepared to provide services to our older adults. We have more racial and ethnic diversity. We, we've seen youth movements and how they can affect social change. We are acknowledging the right and righting historical planning wrongs, and we see how surveillance tools can be both a positive and a negative. Trends that we need to prepare for include artificial intelligence and ethics, data collection, use and protection, some of which was discussed earlier this evening, and private sector community investment. We're starting to see company towns come back now, big tech-funded housing, digital dividends, and increased funding from foundations. Signals that we need to learn about and watch are 3D printing are being used to build bridges to, to supply missing parts in the automotive industry and in our infrastructure. We're starting to see the effects of the Great Resignation and dislocation of workers. I believe Sunday, they had the term of quiet quitting. There's lots of different new names for some of the things, but we have seen a tremendous shift from the nine-to-five come-to-work to the exclusively working-from-home and hybrids in between. And we have to start watching about how the metaverse may affect the way we do business. With regards to our demographics, we've seen an increase of about 8.2% from our previous census in 2010. And I believe some of that can be attributed to the mayor and council and the committee who were very aggressive in getting out there and counting, make sure that everybody counted. SEMCOG forecasts that our population will increase to approximately 84,000 people by 2045. Our average household size is slightly increased as a projection, but we're still way below where we used to be in the 60s and 70s. With regards to our demographics, almost 20% of Southfield residents can be considered older adults, which is 65 and over, and we anticipate that that will double in the United States by 2060. And we have approximately 13,000 residents living with some form of disability. And again, that's why it's important that we continue to provide accessible non-motorized pathways, connectivity from vehicles to main entrances of buildings, and that our campus and our services are accessible. With regards to race, approximately 70% are, are considered black or African-American, 23% white, and 9% others. And our median household income, based on the last census, is around 58,000, with 11.2% of persons categorized as living in poverty. Education, 92% of Southfield adults, 25 years or old, old or older, have a high school diploma, and 55% of Southfield residents have a college degree. Now, in January 2020, we started an aggressive public engagement, worked with a number of our boards and commissions, met with the Southfield City Center, for example, and had a workshop. One of their top concerns is to capture business community after 5:00 PM and weekends. Planning Commission held a public workshop. At the time, again, we were dealing with the pandemic and the importance of getting input from the public, utilizing green space for green infrastructure, pursuing of green initiatives, use of public transit in, in the pandemic, electric buses and vehicles, put those in greater use, and the importance of public art and placemaking were some of the key comments. We also did a six-week online engagement from February 1st to March 22nd of 2021. We had 965 responses, 68 comments, and 581 unique total participants. There were over 2,000 views of our website. Most participants indicated a postal code of 48076 and represented about a third of all those who responded. The highest percentage of respondents were in 36 years, up to 75. And based on the data provided, the highest percentage of respondents identified as female, 64%. Top ideas and common themes are very similar to what we found in 2016. Walkability and connectivity throughout the city was one of the top three comments that participants were looking for. Streets and road repair and placemaking were among the top. Recurring comments is appreciation of the Southfield Public Library, green education, the redevelopment of Northland Shopping Center, and splash pad at Beachwoods Recreation Center. Southfield City Center District conducted another online survey. Over 1,000 responses, 265 comments from 87 participants. Southfield Public Library, again, City Hall, L T U, walking paths and public art were among the top items discussed. Participants want more restaurants, retail, and entertainment options in the district. After-work functions are preferable for engagement as City Center District employee. Two-thirds of respondents are unsure if corporate tenants are invested enough in the city center's efforts. An overwhelming 77% of respondents want to engage young professionals or professionals with young families beyond the work week. 36% of respondents walk or bike around the city center weekly. Additional safe and well-lit connected pathways, walkways, and bike paths were requested. About one-third of respondents anticipate working fully remotely, with about one-quarter working in the office full-time. We've seen about a 25% to 30% reduction in office space leasing because of the pandemic. Today, I believe I was reading an article about Detroit. They had 70,000 workers that came into downtown Detroit pre-pandemic. They're, they're back at only about 29,000 or 42% of pre-pandemic. As you know, those workers help support retail and restaurant and ultimately affect our tax base. With a community that we say is around 78,000 residents and grows to 175,000 office workers pre-pandemic, we can't afford to take a hit of losing about 60% of our office workers and not have some economic impact. So we continue to do the things that we need to, to try to attract and retain professionals, and at least encourage them to come in two to three days a week. As you know, during this review period, the city and council and Parks and Recreation Department adopted a Park and Recreation Master Plan. I won't go into that to, in detail, but we have included and incorporated into our master plan. But some of the key things were to provide unique opportunities and diverse experiences within our park system, to create and maintain accessibility at all parks and facilities in Southfield, to market and promote Southfield's parks and facilities to attract visitors of all ages, and finally, to encourage methods and practices that will improve residents' overall quality of life. We've also seen na- nationally, as well as locally, an expansion of residential offerings in single-family zones. Our, our online survey, 62% of respondents indicated that they would be open to new and innovative forms of housing. 44% of respondents are in support of duplexes and tiny homes in the neighborhoods, and an overwhelming number of respondents are in support of amending the ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units and encouraging adaptive reuse of underutilized buildings. Again, top ideas and common themes were walkability and connectivity, street and road repair, and placemaking. Now, since 2016, we have done a number of zoning innovative trends, including our overlay development district expansion and revisions, the redevelopment of the Northland City Center, residential unit development, including the former John Grayson McKinley Schools, the recently introduced mixed-use corridor district, which my office is receiving a number of calls from developers that want to take advantage of this district, our focus on the nine-mile corridor within the city of Southfield and connecting to our adjacent communities with the ultimate goal of having a greenway connecting I-75 to I-275, and then other zoning amendments that I had discussed. We are seeing a huge shift in retail changes. 20% reduction in, in total US retail real estate inventory, as predicted by CBRE. Customers value inclusivity and sustainability when they do their shopping. Technology helps staff deliver online shopping, social media. Supply chain and transportation challenges we've seen exasperated by the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're going to be dealing more and more with drones and autonomous robots for the last-mile delivery. Industrial businesses, as you've seen, self-storage is red hot. The industrial sector is booming, specifically the last-mile delivery centers, and logistics are prime. Mr. Zorn and myself have indicated that we have put together a sustainability team. Once our master plan has been adopted and the basis with the council, we will launch into adopting a sustainability plan and developing a Climate Action Plan. We have recently joined ICLE, which is the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. We are taking a multi-month tutorial with them on how to go about preparing a sustainability plan and developing metrics for our Climate Action Plan. A little things that we have done recently is, is a public education campaign. We have a banner that's currently located in the City Hall atrium that we take out for our special events, including E to the B and the Jazz Concert. We have placards that we're handing out. The city received a grant for LED lighting, which we have been passing out to encourage more sustainability. We're trying to make things simple for our residents to be a sustainability supporter. These are lists of some eas- easy things that people can do to help reduce our carbon input, impact. We have many projects that we can feature of things that we've been doing individually throughout the years towards this goal, but we need to have a comprehensive plan. And our sustainability plan will address these half a dozen, so categories and themes. We're starting to develop our icons. And recently, talking with Ro- Rosok, Resource Recovery and Recycling Authority of Southwest Oakland County, our utilization rate and total recycling rate is about 29.3%. We could do much better. Our set-out rate is about 48%. So of all the single-family homes, about half of people are, are putting out recyclables on a week-to-week basis. Now, some people don't fill their bins every week. We're estimating that maybe as high as 65% of single-family homes are participating in recycling, so we know we can do much better. The one thing that surprised me is that, as you know, half of our residential units are single-family, the other half are multiple-family, and we don't have a comprehensive recycling program for multiple-family dwelling units. So even if we got a 20% utilization, 30% participation, we can make a huge impact on our overall recyclability. Some of the things that we can do is, is council, Planning Commission, the Planning Department is starting to require multifamily units to provide for recycling bins that can be utilized by their tenants. Also, I've been told that by providing every single-family home with bins on rollers, that will increase our participation rate. And it's not just about being green. It also translates into economic development and jobs. For every one ton of waste, we create one job. For every one ton of recycling, we create 10 jobs. So recycling is not just good for the environment, it's good for our economy, and we need to get those messages out. Simple things that we can do to have a, a more sustainable lifestyle, and I'll just break it down very simply. In US cities, urban cities, about half of all trips are three miles or less. 20% are one mile or less. If we can just take a fraction of the trips that we get in the car to go to the corner store and we can walk or bike, we can have a huge impact on reducing our carbon dioxide emissions. For every gallon of gas that is saved, we can reduce about 20 pounds of carbon dioxide. And the average automobile gets about 22 miles per gallon. So simple math, if, if we all did half of those trips, no one's saying to give up the automobile, but if we did a percentage of those small trips to the grocery store, the postal office, or to our, our children's schools, and we either walked or biked, we can have a huge impact. Walking 1.5 miles would generate less than a quarter of the greenhouse gas that would be emitted if the person drove the same distance, and it also is healthy for our individual lifestyles. Our urban heat island effect by creating parks, green rooftops, gardens and green spaces, promoting green infrastructure, stormwater management techniques, and minimizing the use of dark surfaces, we can reduce the heat effect. In health inequity, as you know, 31% of COVID cases and 40% of deaths were among African-Americans. Detroit and Southfield got hit so high because of our population and our lack of, of good healthcare. We know there's racial disparities in our health. Persons of color are more likely to be injured or killed in pedestrian crash auto accidents. Black Americans represent a disproportionate population of pedestrians. So every time I come to you and ask for funding to build more bike paths or more sidewalks, it has a tremendous impact on our healthy lifestyle for our residents, and we need to keep those, those things in mind. Again, with Southfield having such a high percentage of older adults, we have a greater risk of falls, diabetes, depression, cognitive disorders, and we need to keep, keep those things in mind with larger street signs, better readability, better services to our older adults. We've seen a huge evolution of the employee, and I'll just point out a couple. In the past, we had this mantra of working nine-to-five, Monday through Friday. Now, we can work anytime. We can work in corporate, before we worked in corporate offices, now we can work anywhere. And as I've stated, 42% of pre-COVID workforce in the downtown Detroit were at that level. Used to be 70,000, now we're at 29,400. And we probably see a similar percentage here in, in Southfield. Weaknesses and threats, the pandemic impacts on Southfield, as, as I've illustrated, social inequities, high number of uninsured residents, remote, remote work versus office space vacancies, and the Great Resignation. Aging infrastructure, our changing workforce, lack of vacant, developable land, and auto-dominated land use and infrastructure, as well as climate change, are all weaknesses and threats. Recruiting and retention of employees, we, we're all struggling to find good employees. We have an increased percentage of older adults, our population with mental illnesses, are at least maybe increasing or becoming more aware. And our shrinking household size has a direct impact on our school population. Now, we've developed a number of vision statements to address all these issues. I won't go into those in detail. And wrapping up here. The good news is we have committed and dedicated boards and commission members. We have progressive elected officials. We have innovative zoning and regulation and planning documents. We have a diverse population and workforce. Our older adults are assets, not liabilities. Lawrence Technological University, as well as our other higher education schools. We're a redevelopment-ready community. We have a central location, and we have strong business and professional community. So with that, that's a very high-level overview of our plan. You should have received a, a drop link to, Dropbox to our 300-plus-page document. We're just asking to come back at your September 6th council meeting under consent to authorize our 63-day public review period. We'll take those comments, update the master plan, and then we'll bring it back through the Planning Commission and ultimately to Council for hopeful adoption. the planning commission and ultimately to council for hopeful adoption in December. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Great presentation. Counsel? Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, this is an excellent presentation. There's so much data in it that I would like to have a copy of your presentation, if you can, if you will. The other question, this is more, and you covered everything that I needed to know, but just from a current event standpoint, five or six years ago, they were, the southwest part of the United States were talking about trying to get water from the Great Lakes, and there was some serious talk about that, and I think senators and everybody else got, and the Great Lakes governors kind of set up some kind of firewall. So what is the, and given everything that's going on in Colorado and the water, the drought out there, what is the current conversation about trying to steal water from the Great Lakes?
Well, that's a national issue, but what I think we've learned is that our water and our resources aren't unlimited, and if we don't take care of our resources and conserve, it's going, we're going to run out of those resources. And as I said, we're a climate refuge because of our access and location to the Great Lakes, and we want to protect that. You've seen the Asian carp infestation by introducing non-indigenous species into our ecosystem. We've seen the algae bloom based on pollutants. We've seen E. coli close down our beaches. And there's certain things that we can do as a local community that may have a small impact on national issues, but we got to take care of our own business here. And as I've stated, there's a lot of simple things that we can do without getting into the bigger discussions at this time to ensure that our children and grandchildren have a green and healthy environment to live and thrive in.
Right. And I appreciate that. I didn't mean to put that national question on, but you covered so many things that pumped in my head that made that question pop up.
Yeah, and believe me, when I started this two years ago, some of the issues and trends that I was keeping track of has just continued to increase.
Right.
I was hoping that this was going to be more of an update, but things have changed so quickly. There's so many issues on multiple fronts that we're dealing with that we need to be discussing them and planning for them and be proactive, as well as being fluid to adapt to changing circumstances.
Okay. The other question is, Mr. Zorn may be able to answer this, but how much money are we getting from recycling?
I don't know. We could find that out. I'm excited that we will have a greater, stronger partnership with Rosok. They've agreed to sit on our advisory committee. There's lots of metrics that, some of which I've shared with you today, that I'd like to dive into deeper. And as I said, if you look at it just on job creation, every one ton of recycling that we do increase, can create ten or support ten jobs. Whereas, we put it into our landfill, and we're dealing with methane gas capture, and it doesn't have the economic impact. There's a lot of things with composting that we can do to reduce our overall waste. I believe thirty to forty percent of all the food that we purchase gets thrown away and end up in our landfill, and we can do better things with that compost in our own yards and gardens and parks. So I'm excited to start exploring how we can do a better job with recycling, as well as some of the other issues that we talked about.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for indulging me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Terry, I think this was an excellent presentation, and thank you for updating this sustainable Southfield master plan. I know this was a major undertaking, and I'm looking forward to hopefully implementing some of the suggestions and recommendations, especially staying healthy, bike paths, walking, you know, throughout our city. I mean, we just have to start little by little, and I think you've addressed a lot of important areas that we need to look at, you know, in the future.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I want to acknowledge my entire team, as well as some other partners from other departments. It's been very challenging, as you know, during COVID, being short-staffed, and we see the end line now. We still have a little bit of work to be done, but I'm very proud that our previous master plan, we've completed about ninety-five percent of those items that we said we would do, and I'm hopeful, working with council and our boards and commissions, that we can move that needle to the positive side.
Okay. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. And I'll just echo what Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Brightwell said. This was a great job, very comprehensive, and too, I'm looking forward to really addressing a lot of these issues that you kind of brought up, and particularly with housing, and I'm really happy that we are working on a sustainability plan. And also, sometimes when I talk about the city and I talk about the fact that we have a sustainability planner, people are impressed by that, and impressed that we are being thoughtful about how we are trying to be good stewards of the environment. So that's something I'm really looking forward to, and with the recycling at multi-family, like, that's also something I would definitely like to see the city do. As someone who lives in an apartment, like, I don't have access to recycling, and so there's something that I know that some people would very much appreciate if they had the option to do it, so.
Right, thank you. And I know that you, as a resident, can haul your stuff down to Rosok's facility at Evergreen and Eight Mile, but if we can make it easy for people to walk out their door and have a recycling dumpster next to a trash dumpster, over time, we can reduce fifty percent of what's going into the trash and pick up what the recycling is, and overall have cost savings. So there might be a slight increase in the beginning, but we can start doing things at the local level to encourage through education and then through regulation to try to get a higher percentage of people recycling.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Seiber?
On that last comment, someone contacted me recently, and I've seen this in many places, including airports and hotels and so on, having, instead of just a general trash bin, landfill, plastic, paper, maybe that's something that we can work towards. And I have to just say, this is an excellent, excellent, excellent report. You're really, you're laying out a roadmap. You know, we're experiencing all these things, but you've done a beautiful job of encapsulating the whole issue. So congratulations to you and the staff.
Thank you.
That worked on us.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. So you'll see this, hopefully, under consent on your September sixth meeting, and if you give us our blessing, we will actually be distributing the plan on Wednesday, the seventh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our request to transfer SLT Holdings LLC Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate Number C two oh one seven dash zero one two, an agreement for property at two seven five six six Northwestern Highway, Southfield to Salatia Building LLC. I hope I said that right.
I hope you did, too. I'm not quite sure myself, but good evening, Council President, Mr. Mayor, Animal Board. You'll remember that SLT Holdings had applied for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate, which was approved at the August twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. At that time, they stated that they were going to renovate the new Soul Garden Restaurant, and they have achieved their goals. They've created multiple eateries, and at this point, we did receive a request from the Salatia Building LLC to transfer the certificate C twenty seventeen dash zero one two and its tax abatement agreement to the new company. This is strictly a name change. The ownership has not changed. The state requires that the application be filed by the city when a transfer occurs. We have prepared a resolution. I did put it at the October third meeting because we do have another issue related to this item, and so all the documents would be sent to the state treasurer just to ensure that they have correct records on file, so there would be no change in the status. So again, the ownership has not changed, it's just a name change, and we did consult with the state on the best way to handle this situation, and this was recommended, that we have a resolution. And again, I will be requesting that at the October third meeting, if that's acceptable.
Okay. Okay. You ready for us to ask questions, or?
Is there any? Well, the next item, if there's no discussion regarding this name change, is a request by the company to do a five-year extension.
Well, let me ask council if they have any questions on the name change first, okay?
And I do have a representative from the ownership here.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions regarding the name change for this? No questions, okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Again, as part of economic development incentives, we are encouraging the use of P A two-ten, which freezes the value of the property, the commercial property, for up to ten years. We have had a lot of projects come forward over the last five years, five to six years, and one of them is the renovation of the new Soul Garden Plaza. They have, it's already been five years, it seems like it just went so fast, but they are requesting that they have the additional five years to go up to the maximum of ten years. We have a representative from the planning, their consulting company and the ownership to go over a short presentation. When we granted the five years, there was two clauses that we stated that if they wanted the additional five years, that they would have to achieve those two goals. One would be to fulfill their prior obligations, and the second would be future investment. So please keep that in mind as we have Ryan and Rebecca come up and give the presentation.
Logan, thank you, counsel, for hearing our presentation. So we're looking at expanding the DeBock Restaurant. Got it, okay. So, thanks. Okay, to kind of get, set the background a little bit, this is a family-owned and operated business that's been in Southfield for thirty years now, right? They're a small business enterprise, they're minority and veteran business. They originally opened the new Soul Plaza, and it was home to three small restaurants within the plaza, which is the DeBock Korean Barbecue, the Naomi Coffee and Dessert Cafe, and Gingy, which is a lunch cafe, which has changed since that time, and I'll get into that in a second. They've invested over five-point-million dollars in renovations and upgrade in the existing new Soul Plaza, and they've also created seventy-five jobs, and they've got a new Tiger Market coming pretty soon, which is an Asian marketplace and produce market that they're building right now. Okay, so the property history, it's a single parcel of two-point-eight-three acres. They acquired it back in two thousand and seventeen, and they renovated it over to the next year. The original floor plan comprised of three different restaurants, DeBock, Gingy, and Naomi, was over ten thousand square foot of restaurant space. Gingy was more of kind of a lunch venue, and since the pandemic, the demand for Gingy just kind of went down, so they've kind of repurposed that area into a K-pop store, which specializes in a lot of Korean-based kind of pop culture kind of stuff. Yeah, yeah. And it's been pretty popular since then, so. So they originally came up with the P A two-ten Commercial Rehabilitation Act when they renovated the restaurant. Southfield and the developer got into agreement in August of two thousand and seventeen for a period of five years, as Shelley had mentioned, and the abatement took effect in two thousand and eighteen. So this is what they're going to do to the restaurant. Demand has been pretty outstanding, for lack of a better term, over the last year. They've really weathered COVID pretty well. Right now, they just don't have the capacity to accommodate their customers without wait times and setting up, you know, appointments and stuff like that, or reservations. So what they'd like to do is that they want, they're going to add on another seven-hundred-and-fourth square feet of restaurant space that's going to be able to accommodate another fifty-two people. It's going to be a four-season and enclosed open-air dining space area that's going to be right on to the additional DeBock Restaurant. It's going to be equipped with all of the, you know, energy-efficient windows and doors and HVAC plumbing and systems that all have to be upgraded to accommodate the space. They're going to use that same state-of-the-art Korean barbecue induction equipment, so you can have the experience of dining Korean cuisine with cooking it right at the table. They're going to be able to accommodate larger party requests, which is, I think they can only accommodate up to twenty people right now, and this will definitely increase that amount. And it's also, the big thing is going to reduce the customer wait time, so they can get more people to come in and be able to service them in an acceptable fashion. I was just told this morning, or this afternoon, that my figure there for the one-forty was our original estimate for increasing the seven-hundred-and-four square feet. It's gone up ten percent since we prepared this presentation and we put it in the request. It's just sign of the times with the cost of labor and materials at that point, so they'd want to get this going as fast as possible to get this thing ready and rolled out by the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. It's going to allow them to hire a few more waitstaff people and kitchen help as well, so it's going to create some extra jobs, and the taxes will continue to be collected at thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. So why are we asking for this for now? Well, first of all, our current abatement expires after this year, so we have to ask for the, request an extension, otherwise we won't be able to do it again for this parcel. The statute does allow for ten years in total, so we're asking for the additional five years. And the other part of it is this K-pop response, and I can have Rebecca here in a second kind of explain to that what that is. It's kind of new to me, but it seems to be really popular with the, popular space within the restaurant, and so that's kind of shifted the thinking of the owner to take a look at that rear part of their restaurant property that you can kind of see in the graphic there. You can see where the restaurant is, and they've got this parking lot in the back there that just is never used, and so they've kind of started thinking about, and talking with the civil engineer and their architect, what can we do with that parcel to make it a little bit more productive? And they're in preliminary kind of design phase right now, in layout phase, to construct another building back there on that property, which would be a nine-thousand-square-foot, two-story building right now, with five tennis spaces totaling six thousand square foot on the ground floor. And then if you've ever been to the restaurant, they're kind of, their office is, the manager's office is like a closet. It's just really not working out very well to them, so they want to actually have a headquarters for all of the holdings that they have there with the market and the restaurant and this building as well. And so they're currently working on the design on this, we'll have it through planning, where we're planning as, when it gets done, and so we're just kind of looking ahead a little bit, too. So the abatement would also help with that as well, but it wouldn't be opening until two thousand and twenty-four, so there would only be three years of abatement that would be eligible for, under this. And that's my presentation. If you want any comments or anything about K-pop, because I don't much about it.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, President Taylor, Mayor Seiber, Mr. Zorn. It's been wonderful to be a great partner with the City of Southfield. We appreciate all your support that you've done for us in making our business very successful. Salatay was a financial business decision to separate the two properties since they purchased the market next door. The financial managers advised us that we needed to separate the businesses. So Salatay, which is a family still owned by the same company, same individuals, Salatay stands for Sarah, S-A, Lena, L-I, Tay, Sue, which is T-A, and Yi, Y-I, which is Salatay. So it is truly a family-owned business, and they take it very seriously, and they really want this to be a legacy for their family and their grandchildren to actually enjoy. So K, because of the pandemic, everybody knows about the pandemic, it really decimated
So K, because of the pandemic, everybody knows about the pandemic, it really decimated Gingy. They have done well with DeBach, meaning the reason for the additional seven hundred and four square feet. But what happened when we renovated the whole building, we lost the ability to accommodate large parties. So there was a large party facility in the back, which is now where DeBach is. But we turned it into three small restaurants. So we looked at it all different ways and this was the best way, given the pandemic, that we would be able to have a large space with open-air seating. And so it'd be, if this pandemic still continues to hang around, we have a way to make people, our customers feel comfortable and have an outdoor seating. But it is usable four seasons, year-round. The K-pop is what we turned Gingy into. So it is Korean popular culture. There's BTS, there's Blackpink. I don't know if anybody knows all these, but trust me, they are huge. And we have made licensing agreements with authentic licensing companies to market their only specific licensed material, so it's authentic material, because it is bootlegged all over the world. And people have been coming for different K-pop events. They come out and they dance, they have clubs that are K-pop focused. And it just creates a wonderful community environment. And people are coming here because they know that they're getting authentic merchandise. So that is what they're turning Gingy into. And they're just trying to make it work and be a good partner in the city and continue to move with this thing that we call the pandemic and continue to be successful businesses. But thank you, that's what K-pop is.
Thank you.
Oh, our ask is that we hold a public hearing to do the five-year extension on October third. So that's, that's what our ask is for tonight.
Okay.
Counsel, do we have any questions for this?
Counselwoman Banks? Thank you. The K-pop, is that like an outdoor restaurant? Or is it just music or a combination of both?
Believe it or not, it's a little of everything you just said.
Okay.
It's a merchandising, K-pop is a genre of music. It started with popular Korean bands, like boy bands, girl bands. And it's kind of like N'Sync, I don't know if you remember back in my day, the boy band N'Sync. They've now, Korea has created this trend of a genre called, it's popular music, pop music. And it just happens to be Korean. So they have merchandised the individual band members, they've turned them into these really cute characters. And then they have food products, they have cosmetics, jewelry, I mean posters, and they do sell the music too.
That corner picture is the pop-up shop for K-pop at the facility. It's, so it's merchandising, it's just really adorable, kind of fun merchandise, it's very pricey too.
Because it's authentic.
And then as Rebecca mentioned, they had some dance contests and different things, so they're having fun events. But if you go into the facility, you can see it's like a little retail store with fun products.
So do you presently have outdoor dining in the back?
No, there is no outdoor dining at the moment. We do have two outdoor seating areas, patios, but it's, they can, but it's not for DeBach, which is the Korean BBQ. So this would be specifically, the expansion would be for DeBach.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So what are you looking for for us tonight?
Well, I, we would like to, I don't know if there has to be action, but we would like to have a public hearing on October third, so.
Okay. I don't think we have to do anything for that. Okay.
I, I do, I failed to compliment Mr. Crowde when I started speaking, but the planning department really did an outstanding job with their sustainable Southfield master plan. And, you know, we've been working with their department, they've really hit on all of the key components that are occurring. And this, this restaurant, as well as the next request that we have, are examples of our outstanding entrepreneurs that are in our community that have really reshaped themselves and made investments in themselves. And, you know, they really go along with the master plan and so it's a really great example. And so thank you for your continued investment.
Thank you.
And I would like that the gentleman who runs our Centropolis Accelerator to come forward and help me with this next presentation.
Okay. And our next presentation is the coronavirus aid assistance for the Evolution Lab at Centropolis Accelerator.
That's correct, thank you so much. As you know, the city did receive a, a large allotment of funds to address the continuing impact of COVID nineteen on the economy, our public health, and, and the individuals and businesses in our city. Business Development Department did identify that there was a need for greater support for emerging small businesses due to the pandemic. And we worked to create a pilot program, kind of at the same time that I was thinking of this service, the New Economy Initiative, which is based in Wayne County, also was thinking of a similar product. And when, and they had approached Centropolis, so, and I was thinking about the same resources as well. So we kind of collided. And so city council on November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, did approve an initial commitment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help support this effort. And the effort was targeting small businesses, micro makers, people of, people of color, women, veterans, persons with disabilities, and people that are located in distressed communities. So our support was dovetailed into some efforts that Centropolis was working on with Wayne County residents and businesses. Just to connect you again with Centropolis, their mantra is to enable those with ideas for physical products to create and recognize their dreams, helping them build businesses and manufacture their products in Michigan. This is our smart zone and so we are supported by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and Lawrence Tech. And Dan Rambowski, who is here, he's done an outstanding job of bringing together area foundations and federal and state and regional organizations to help fund the initiatives and the activities that take place at Centropolis. Their, their mission is to accelerate the growth of Michigan's advanced manufacturing, innovative hardware entrepreneurs and small manufacturing, manufacturers by providing access to funding experts in key businesses, business and product development resources. So I'm going to turn the rest over to Dan. But I also, as we talked about the master plan and all the efforts, on Thursday, Dan held a phenomenal event at the Mint that showcased clean tech, climate tech, and circular economy companies. Our, our environmental planner was in attendance. And it just would be phenomenal to see those resources come to the city as a test facility for a lot of the things. So it was really great. And so Dan, I'd like to have you.
Thanks, Shelley. First of all, I would like to thank the city of Southfield, the mayor, the council, Brad and Shelley, for seeing the value in what we were trying to create over five years ago, to create a business incubator here in the city of Southfield. I'm quite proud now to report that there's several businesses that we've launched here in the city of Southfield, as well as products that are made here in our backyard. And the Southfield Evolution Lab is only increasing the need and the demand from Southfield citizens and businesses to, to grow and develop businesses. So this is our, our team, we have a pretty lean team of staff to help support business development and product development. But we use a number of contracted professionals, what we call experts and residents, that all have twenty-five, thirty years of experience in growing and developing businesses, as well as designing and engineering products. We even have in-house design and engineering for anyone that's, has an idea for a physical product, consumer product, medical device, otherwise, to help them engineer it and bring it to market at the right cost point so they can have a sustainable business. We launched the Southfield Evolution Lab, as Shelley was mentioning, was an idea Shelley and others here in the city of Southfield had, where we could put a concentration on supporting anybody, an inventor, a startup, an established small business that was looking to launch a business, grow a business, to provide services and support. And that support includes business strategy, connections with customers, strategic partners and funders. And while we traditionally have had a pretty amazing track record in developing physical products, we opened this up to services, restaurants, retail, really any, any type of business in the city of Southfield, and made sure that anyone that came in our door received some level of support, even help with strategy, how to launch a business, as well as raising funding. These are some of the companies that we have funded just in the last year, including seven here that you see that went through a formal process that led to micro grants. All of these are micro businesses operating in Southfield. Company Barbara Lyons, a Southfield citizen, who launched a unique product for developing a new rake. I'm very happy to say we're getting that product to market made right here in our backyard. So these are the, you know, just in ten months, ten months of launching the Southfield Evolution Lab, we've had over a hundred inquiries. We now have thirty-two clients we're working with and have funded eleven companies. And what I'm pretty proud of is we've also attracted over twenty companies to the city of Southfield. And these are companies from all over the place, not just regionally. We've attracted companies from Chicago, Los Angeles, even Silicon Valley, as far as away from as India and Norway. Eleven of these firms specifically decided to locate in Southfield because of the services and support they were receiving from the Southfield Evolution Lab. And for those that are a little, a little bit less familiar with the Southfield Centropolis Accelerator, we have in-house design engineering and prototyping to make physical products and drive out costs and connect with local suppliers. This is an example of one of the women-owned businesses that moved to the city of Southfield. She had an idea for a portable parallel bars for physical therapy, where it collapsed, so you can move it from floor to floor in a hospital or assisted living center. And as you see on the left, the design they came to us with was kind of crude and had too many custom parts. And we completely redesigned and engineered it, as you can see there in the blue. And more importantly, got the cost of the production down from ten thousand dollars a unit to seventeen hundred dollars a unit. Many people have great ideas, but they have a hard time getting to the right price points so they can have a viable business and have a margin that sustains it. That's what we do a really good job of. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to, you know, expand this work and help more individuals, you know, residents of the city of Southfield, businesses in Southfield. Thank you.
So there is a, we had submitted a request when city council and the city administration had asked for requests for these dollars. We had put together a budget that was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two years of funding. Our desire is to divide that for twenty-two to twenty-three and twenty-three to twenty-four. The dollars would be helped, again, to support the resident experts with the assistance as well. You know, the mayor and I had participated in a pitch competition, kind of like Shark Tank. And so the, some of the, the winners were allocated funds to help them further the development of their product. So we'd like some of this money to go towards that effort as well. And then to help, some of the dollars would be allocated towards marketing as well. So we, we are asking for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the two years for this funding. And again, this was brought forward as part of the larger overview of how these dollars would be spent at a past city council meeting. I, I was requesting that this be put on a consent agenda item. Or if you'd like to make a approval today, that would be wonderful too, I'd appreciate it.
Counsel, do we have any questions, comments, preference? Counselwoman Brightwell?
I visited there, what, was several months ago, we had a session there. And I was impressed with the facilities and the, and that's what you're doing. But I have a couple of little, minor questions. And this is not a homeboy question, but how many Southfield residents are actually utilizing this?
Well, again, we can go back to the slide. They, they are all tracked. So we, currently the number of clients that we have are thirty-two and we've had over two hundred and sixty meetings. We've set up on the accelerator website, the Evolution Lab Inquiry Form, so people can go in and, and submit requests. And so I believe that's the two, two hundred and sixty requests. I'm not exactly sure how many are Southfield.
There's been a hundred and nine requests for support from Southfield in just ten months, which is pretty amazing.
Okay.
So we know that there's obviously a demand for those that want to develop micro businesses.
Okay, so that one oh nine is actually people with an address here in Southfield.
It takes a while for us to meet with, with individuals before we decide, hey, we know exactly what they need. And, and that's when we actually, you know, trigger them into a client relationship. So of that hundred and nine, thirty-two have already become clients.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to get a, a usage from, you know, people from the five or six zip codes that we got here in Southfield. So what, and, and I'm, I'm prefacing, I'll just, I visited, what, several months ago, I was impressed, I was there for an hour or so. So I'm, I'm impressed, but I'm just trying to, what is the ultimate objective? And let's say at the end of two thousand twenty-four, what would be ideal? What would be an ideal, a letter of accomplishment at, at that duration?
Sure, so, you know, as Planner Crowde had mentioned, there has been a big evolution of, of business people. Many people have left their traditional jobs and have started their own businesses. And our goal is to strengthen the population of our community, realizing that many of our residents have sought to fulfill their dreams and to look for their own, you know, take their ideas to the next level. And, you know, out of this list of people, when you look at this list, I've met many, almost every business on here. They are all different ages, they're all different colors, they're all different kinds of people. Barry Cleansoaps is a young woman, the carpet puller, him and his, I think it's his wife. They're an, an older couple, they're probably in their seventies. They're, they're, they're all different ages. The Versaware who's coming here from California are these two young men. Weirology is a, you know, a woman, she's probably in her fifties or sixties. They're all different ages and so it's really great to see people that, you know, you think would, and same with the Nielsen family, they're, they, they're an elderly, older couple. They've trained, they've taken their businesses or they've been working their whole lives for a different, for, for a larger company and really are trying to fulfill their dreams. And so our goal is to strengthen the residents in our community and give them the opportunity to be their own business owner. And I, and I think Ray's still here, really what he is, what Mr. Moulden had stated is true. We want people to be able to control their own destiny. But they might have a great idea and it is really hard to take your idea and turn it into a real product. And so by tapping into all the experts that we've pulled together for these really high-tech companies, you know, if you go to the accelerator and the people that were featured on Thursday are people that have ideas, you, you can't even imagine what those people were talking about, it was crazy. But, you know, so you have these people that are trying to harness energy and then you have an older gentleman that wants to figure out a better way to pull up carpet. So, but the concept is to. So, but the concept is the same, on how to turn that into a real product. And so we figured that this is a great way to utilize the staff and to help empower people to be their own bosses. And so, you know, as many people as we can get through this process. We've been working with our Chamber of Commerce to highlight the services that are available. We've created opportunities for people to come together and share their thoughts and work as a team amongst themselves so that they can, you know, talk about their experiences and be with other like people. So people that have, you know, that idea and formation and what the struggles they're going through. And so we've been trying to bring those people together. And again, you know, I guess just trying to strengthen.
I make, I make one comment. The, the pitch competition we had for the Southfield Evolution Lab that the mayor was at and Shelley was at, the, the award winner was Lucy Pop. As you see there, she's a woman of color, young lady. And she, she works as a nail technician, but she had an idea for an eco-friendly nail covering, nail polish essentially. And we're going to get that product to market. And what's beautiful about it is now she has an opportunity to create her own wealth, right? She's going to launch a business and she's going to create her own wealth, as opposed to working for others. And she's going to do it right here in the city of Southfield. And, and when I think of why this is important, I think of examples like that.
Dan, can you share the different funding sources that have been leveraged, that have come in? The New Economy Initiative, Ralph Wilson, the state's support. And, you know, to counsel, this is, when we started the accelerator, this is kind of the apogee of economic development. When you develop and evolve to where you're supporting an ecosystem for entrepreneurs, the tag team with Lawrence Tech focused on manufacturing hardware. When we went after that EDA grant, it was a very different target. And our Smart Zone, this is kind of that continuation of that investment. And if we saw anything during the pandemic, and I think Ms. Friedman is correct, in our master plan, as we talk about closing those social inequities. And that's really the purpose of the New Economy Initiative. It, it was originally focused on the city of Detroit to get their participation. Same thing with the Ralph Wilson, the recent announcement from the MEDC last week. If you can maybe share that.
Yeah, we've, we've been able to leverage dollars from a wide variety of sources, including state, federal, and foundations. What I'm particularly proud of is the Southfield Evolution Lab allows us dedicated micro grants that allows us to invest in Southfield businesses. And the first dollars are the hardest. We have a lot of matching programs out there where when a young business has dollars, they'll, they'll match that. So Business Accelerator Fund is an example of that with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and others. So we've estimated about for every dollar we are able to get in to support Southfield businesses, we're able to leverage five additional dollars into those same Southfield businesses from other sources.
Okay. Well, like I said, I've visited there. I was there for about an hour, hour and a half one day. Months ago, and I was impressed, but I was just, just trying to get some meat on the bone with respect to when people ask me about this. But I'm just, just trying to look for some other selling points. So, but I'm, I am impressed based on my visit and the presentation. And I did see that a couple of those projects in progress at, at that particular time. So. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Cyber?
Those of you that have seen Shark Tank, the TV show. So when I was asked to attend the pitch event, honestly, I was a little apprehensive just knowing Shark Tank and how these people banter back and forth and as well as investing in the products that are pitched, the companies. But honestly, it was a great experience. And there was just a, it was very impressive, the innovations and the, the ideas that are coming to life. And clearly, a great diversity of people. Again, the, the woman that won the nail polish for brittle nails and something eco-friendly, the carpet puller, the, the one that's gotten a lot of attention is the Pingree Leather Recycling, Surplus Leather from Auto Products, also a minority company that's now making, I didn't know this because they were doing belts and wallets. They've now expanded into shoes and dog leashes. Again, it's, it's very inventive and, you know, it's, it's a great service that this is providing. And then with the connection with Lawrence Tech as well. I, for me, there's a lot of talent at Lawrence Tech and, or in this, and in the greater community. I want to see that talent stay here and not go to the West Coast or some other place, but develop jobs and, and keep, keep a talent bank in, in Michigan and preferably Southfield.
Thank you. Counsel, do we want to entertain a motion? Okay.
Yes, Madam President. I move that we support the coronavirus assistance for Evolution Lab at Centropolis Accelerator as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the use of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the Corona, for coronavirus aid assistance for Evolution Lab at Centropolis Accelerator with funding HR 1391 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're grateful. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Our next item is the LED update to DTE-owned streetlights.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're asking you to continue our conversion to all LED streetlights by agreeing to convert 1,183 DTE-owned streetlights from high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor to LED. The total cost of this project is $313,000 or about $265 a light. Once it's completed, we will, will receive a $22,000 grant from DTE's Energy Optimization Fund. That's the fund we all pay into on our DTE bills. This work will initially be funded by the LRF, the Local Improvement Revolving Fund Loan, and be paid back through savings from the LED costs, which will be lower than the streetlights being replaced. Our costs are currently about $325,000 a year for lighting. They will drop $77,000 a year, and that will mean a payback of less than four years. So our residents will get the benefits of the streetlights right away. Their costs won't go up, and then in about four years, their costs will go down to reflect the LED costs. Project should be completed in about 90 days, but that is dependent on supplies. Even for DTE, 1,200 streetlights is a good number of streetlights. So there's always a possibility of problems there.
All right. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Actually, I was going to ask this question later on, but it's appropriate time here. The streetlights on Civic Center Drive, I know many of them are out. Is it because they are going to also be replaced with these LEDs?
Correct. The, right now, those are still under, in fact, I just met with Mr. Zorn last week on that. They're still under review. DTE has some recommendations for how we can replace those in a more economical manner. Those actually belong to us. So right now, we are holding off on major investments on those until we discover what we're going to do with them or recommend to counsel we do. You're right.
We just can't put lights in in the meantime?
Well, if that were the problem, yes. When that is the problem, we put lights in them. But the problems, we're starting to run into an hour with the wiring underground. And that's a substantial investment, especially for lights that we're probably going to run differently next time.
So do, so do you think they will work with us, even though that's our project? Will they work with us to?
Well, what DTE would like us to do is to replace those with lights that they own, and then we pay them to maintain them. There's obviously more cost to pay DTE to maintain lights. But let's face it, streetlights are something that cities are traditionally not good at maintaining. Larger cities near us, we see it. We see it here with these lights. DTE focuses on lights. We hire them to maintain them. It seems to work better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Banks, those, those lights are obsolete as well. Parts, correct, John?
Yes, sir, they are. I mean, the bulbs are available, but when the ballast start to go.
Yeah. And they're, they don't fit with anything else we have in the city, as you probably know.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel? This is just our update. So we, do you need an action?
We're asking for, for approval on this, yes.
Okay. Counsel?
Madam President, I move approval of the LED up, um, DTE-owned streetlight proposal as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the LED update to DTE-owned streetlights as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have the counsel portion. Okay. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Okay. So, um, again, with reference to the lights on Civic Center, I know we're exploring other options, but do we know how long that's going to be? A lot of the neighbors are complaining and they, you know, they walk in that area and the sidewalks are a little uneven, and I guess they're just so used to the lights. And there's a lot of, a lot of people that walk in the evenings over there. And I think probably three-quarters of them are out. So I don't know, in the meantime, if we can just replace the bulbs until we can figure out what we're doing if we have bulbs. I, I don't know how long this is going to take for the study of what to do next.
Madam President, as Deputy Administrator McCarina indicated, we're in a very ongoing, active discussion about street lighting with DTE in particular, the lights you're speaking of, as well as review of the SAD districts and updating. We're waiting to see, one of the items, we're waiting to see what happens with the recent requests in front of the Michigan Public Service Commission. But one of the, you know, our, our drive around the earlier activity was, let's get to that 40% reduction in electrical use. Let's begin that reducing our carbon footprint there and getting that energy savings. But we have a larger issue, and, and I'm sorry, I stepped out for a moment. Civic Center, the lights among, uh, American Drive and the Smart Zone, as well as the lights at the south end of Southfield Road, as you can come off, and then Telegraph and Eight Mile. Those are the areas where we're, we're putting, frankly, quite a bit of time in. And, and then we've been working our way through some of the legal issues of updating SAD districts that haven't been touched in, John, a very long time, over 20, 30 years. The, the existing SAD districts have never been updated. Do we know the last time they were updated?
Over 40 years ago, sir.
Yeah.
And if I could?
Yes.
I have spoken with some residents on Civic Center Drive. I certainly understand their concerns. When we talk about the funding and they understand that most of these lights cannot be changed without substantial cost, they understand we'd like to wait until we can go with a permanent fix. As I said, any of the bulbs that can be replaced, we do, but it's not the bulbs that are failing. It's the wiring.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, it is, from an infrastructure standpoint, we, we know we got a gap in our streets. The Transportation Asset Management Plan set $7 million a year. We need additional for, for streets. Street lighting, I figure, I anticipate it's about a $2 million issue for us to get that updated. And then are those lights SAD? Are they, you know, how are they being paid for? Almost all the other lights in the city are paid for by a defined district with people covering those costs. So those are the types of things we have to wrestle with as a community. So street lighting, then the other item is that stormwater issue. And those are kind of the, the holes in our infrastructure strategy still.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have nothing additional to add this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
File veterans, the Veterans Administration has currently suspended the payment of benefit debt through December 31. It was due to expire September 30 of this year. They extended it to December 31. Those benefit debts include disability compensation, non-service connected pensions, and education benefits. And while we have, our audience might not be a veteran, but most people know a veteran or, and/or have a friend that knows a veteran or child. So just tell them that the VA has suspended benefit debt through December 31. And if they require, obviously, if you require additional information, you can call 800-827-0648. And if you require more information here locally, just give me a call here at City Hall, 248-796-5150. And that is for veterans. And as I always say, when you, when we will give veterans benefit seminars, just pass the word on. If you hear something that is beneficial, you can tell that veteran's parents, wife, sister, or relative that they can reach out and get their benefits suspended, I mean, benefit payments, the debt on, on the benefits that they owe the VA on until December 31. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
I have, I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to say thank you to the mayor and to Kimmy Horn and all of the, I know I'm a little late because I wasn't here last week, but the, the show was very, very well. It was, it was excellent this year. And I do like how you, the layout, everything was just very, very nice. I had
Thank you.
a lot of comments come back saying that they enjoyed the, the concert this year. So that was really nice. I also want to let everyone know, if you haven't heard already, that Dr. Calvin McCray, who puts on the Exploring Africa presentation every year at the library, passed away earlier this year, well, a couple of weeks or so ago. So they will be doing a special presentation for him over at the library at the end of September. And if you've never seen the presentation, it is awesome. I emceed the, the show for him a couple of times, a few years, I should say. And it's just amazing how much knowledge he brings to our youth and to the adults regarding our African heritage. So just to, if you can attend, that'll be on the 28th of September at the library. And beyond that, everyone have a happy Labor Day. I don't think we'll have a meeting before then. And stay safe with all of your practices, the parades and picnics and what have you. Just be safe knowing that coronavirus and all of the sub-variants are still out there. So we still have to protect ourselves. So with that, I'll say thank you, and look to you.
Very quickly, just wanted to advise the counsel that I've been contacted by our sister city, Dangjeochan, South Korea. As you know, we sent a delegation, including Councilman Brightwell, to Dangjeochan a couple of years ago. There's a new mayor in Dangjeochan, and he plans to visit the United States this fall. We're still working on a date, but I wanted to let you know. But I wanted to let you know that they would like to return to Southfield. We're looking at a time in October. And then I was also contacted by another delegation from Ghana that would like to visit the city. I'm trying to set up a meeting with them to plan the visit, so I will keep you apprised of that as well. And then I wanted to just let you know that on August seventeenth and nineteenth, we had our seventh annual Rock the Block with Habitat for Humanity. And we had nearly a hundred volunteers come out and worked on twelve homes in the Evergreen Nine Mile area. Sponsors were Fifth Third Bank, Alley Corporation, the APTV, can't read my writing, ATTV Corporation Bosch, Dan Law, Epsilon, Rockwood Mortgage, Pistons Group, and McLean FOG that sponsored all of this. They brought the materials, the tools. This was all done at no cost to the city or the homeowners. Again, the seventh annual. So we're very grateful for this continuing partnership that we have with Habitat for Humanity Oakland County. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to jump around. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, Councilwoman President, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you. No treasurer? City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, we are requesting, with the assistance of our city attorney authorization, to go closed door to discuss a real estate transaction. And upon the conclusion of that discussion, we would like to ask for action as well.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session to discuss, as indicated with the administrator saying.
For the discussion to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time and an option to purchase or lease the real property is obtained, MCL fifteen dot two six eight D.
Yes.
I think you had to say the whole thing for your motion.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session to discuss, for the discussion to consider the purchase of lease or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained per Michigan, per MCL fifteen point two six eight D.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to the approval to go into closed session for the purpose of discussion to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease the real property is obtained, MCL fifteen point two six eight D. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a roll call.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes. We will now go into closed session.
Can Fred repeat the motion or just what he's asked? I was just wondering if you could repeat the motion that you want us to approve?
Sorry.
The motion?
What is the motion to be approved?
Be it resolved that Counsel does hereby authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign, subject to the review and consent of the city attorney, as to form a mutually acceptable letter of intent to enter into an inter-local agreement to lease land and provide for improvements to and the operation, planning, and maintenance of approximately forty to fifty-five acres of real property to be further defined according to a development and programming, which is part of Beechwoods Park as described in the diagram attached. Be it further resolved that the inter-local agreement between the city of Southfield and the county of Oakland, a municipal and constitutional corporation by and through its statutory agent, the Oakland County Parks and Rec Commission, will be presented at a later date for the approval of city council.
So moved.
That's the board.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the request from the city administrator as just presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Is there any other business for this counsel tonight? Seeing and hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.